We'll have a moment of side meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. It is Wednesday, May 8th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. Eastern Standard Time. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. Our first item on the agenda is consent and approval with Renata McClellan, our county administrator. Good morning, Renata.
Hey, Renata.
We do not have any exonerations for you to approve this morning. Minutes for May 1st, 2024. Vouchers, General County, 410,8122. Coal severance, 4,150. 911, 2007 1301. Chestnut Ridge Park, 4,03660. Camp Muffley, 1,08588. Mason-Dixon Park, 2,03830. Mon County Center, 2,07865. Recreation levy, 1,039782. Reallocated coal, $45. Assessors valuation, 6,08946. Payroll, $1,762,13521. Teen Court, 43,41239. ARPA, $75,096. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, 7,72223. Home confinement, 5,99634. Camp Muffley, 45550. Mason-Dixon Park, 9153. Mon County Center, 1,039627. Assessors valuation, 78850. For a voucher total of 3 million, I'm sorry, 2,332,73991. We have no budget revisions to approve. Vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for May 8th, 2024.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any other fiduciary items?
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is introduction and new employees, personnel changes. Chestnut Ridge Park.
Okay, got Hannah Elizabeth Jack Miller. Her date of hire is May 13th, 2024. She is going to be part-time, seasonal, without benefits. Rate of pay is $12 an hour.
Move to approve the employee as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And second one, yes, second one is the Day Report Center, Cameron Davis. Case aid drug screening technician for the Day Report Center. Start date is also May 13th, and it's 1350 per hour. Part-time, no benefits.
Move to approve the employee as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any others?
No, that's all.
We now open the comments from the public portion of the meeting. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, raise their hand, come forward, provide his or her name and address for the record. Please note that time will be limited at the discretion of the president. Does anybody like to speak?
Come on down.
Come on down.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Wrong side. I just couldn't stay away. Our first meeting back in council chambers, and I had to come here the next day. Danielle Trumble, 1141 Charles Avenue, here in Morgantown. I just wanted to, first, on behalf of council, thank the commission for their generous use of space over the last two years, much longer than we anticipated, and thank to those of you who came to our ribbon cutting yesterday. It was a very exciting time. We were very happy not to have to take all of our stuff down and pack it away in between every meeting, so looking forward to that moving forward. I'm here to ask for assistance only as one member of council, this is not on behalf of council. We adjourned our meeting last night at 11:42 p.m., largely in part because council and staff was meeting with the director of Bartlett House about requests that they had recently made to both the city and the county. We came up with some ideas about that, the city manager is going to be working on it, but I don't think it is a secret to anyone that with the trouble that Bartlett House is having now, our entire community is suffering. There's a couple of us council people who are working on this, and I know a few of you. I think we really need to take a more official stance. A lot of people have been coming to Morgantown City Council and asking us to address these things. This is not something that the city of Morgantown can do alone. I'm asking for things like an RFP for a warming shelter, which I have spoken to more than one of you about, and social services and city people. And everyone seems to think it's a good idea, but there's no movement on that. And it is May, and cold weather will be here before you know it. It is extraordinarily time-consuming to spin something like that up, especially when places like Bartlett House are likely not going to be able to do that this year for us moving forward. So we really need to get the word out to people who may be able to do that. I also suggest that we have a joint meeting between the city of Morgantown, the Montague County Commission. I know that it's Montague, not Monongahela. Sorry, it's a little poke at the mayor there. She's had a long week. The Montague County Commission, I would also like to see representatives from the other municipalities, Granville, Star City, Westover. We know that there are campers in these municipalities. I've seen them, I've cleaned up after them along the rail trail. I have been to all of the shopping centers around and seen the Panhandler. This is not just a city of Morgantown issue. We also need to really address that free bus line that gets people back and forth to Hazel's House of Hope with Salvation Army, because it is my understanding that as of right now, the end of June, that will no longer be free. And we are trying to work with solutions with the mountain line. Maybe for the first time in a long time, they're willing to talk about the levy that they have and the free bus passes that that provides to residents, and maybe being able to donate those. So it would be really great if we could get county commission and other municipalities support on that, because that would not only allow people to get to H3, but really allow them to move throughout the area wherever they need to go. So this is just me asking for some type of coordinated effort to handle these things, because right now councillor Butcher and I are kind of out on a limb as it comes to the city, and we really need support, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Danielle.
Thank you, Danielle. Anyone else?
Perfect timing. That's all right.
Good morning.
Hi, my name's Veeby Honeyly, and I live out on Caswell, Mount Morris Road. And Clear Fiber got a grant to run service out that way, and with this debacle, we have no internet. You have a lot of kids living out there that are in school. You have elderly people, you have people that work from home. I have neighbors that have kids with disabilities that need access to internet for various things. And I am just coming here on behalf of kind of everyone in our neighborhood. I also know that Mount Morris and Waynesburg don't have internet. But I'm just here wondering what's going to be done now that that man's in jail. Is someone else going to take over the lines that they ran? Is that even a possibility? But just that we need to have some kind of coordinated effort to get some internet out that way for folks.
May I ask to suspend the rules, just to ask a question?
Sure. Was it a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
My question is, I don't know, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Let me explain a little bit. It's been in the papers where they had awarded a large amount of money to an organization. And again, I don't know the players, so I'm not going to say the specific names.
His name is Timothy Humphrey.
To run fiber, and there's the allegation that they misappropriated the funds, and the person is facing legal issues. So the thing that we run into all the time with trying to connect these different areas of the county is once, if somebody gave a grant to somebody to cover an area, boom, that area becomes served and off the map, and we're looking to cover other areas. So I can try to get you an answer if you leave your name and an email address where I can get back to you. I don't know, I don't think it's going to be a quick answer, because I've struggled over the past three years trying to get a lot of these areas where there were, for instance, art-off funds that were granted to move some of these projects forward, and trying to get them, hey, if they're not going to do it, let us come in and do it. So it's really a frustrating process, but I could try to get you somewhat of an answer.
I do know we did contact Xfinity at one point, and they wanted like 10 or 15 grand to run service out that way. So I don't know if that's an option, if it's in any kind of budget, because I know Clear Fiber got the money from the Department of Agriculture.
How many customers are we talking about?
I mean, there's a lot.
Is there? Okay.
Well, if, please leave me your name and email address.
Where do I do that?
You'll leave it right here with our administrator.
I'll write it down and bring it to you.
And I will get you an answer, and then I'll always put it on the waitlist, because we're keeping a list of these other areas in the county that may or may not be covered, but are constricted by the whole funds that are already granted. So there's a lot of little
I knew nothing, yeah.
There's a lot of little niche neighborhoods that are like that.
All right, thank you guys.
And if you had anything from Xfinity in writing or
I can ask them for something.
Yeah, that would be great.
Who would I email that to?
Yeah, thank you, I didn't.
Yeah.
Anybody else like to speak? Come on forward.
I'm Derek Jackson, I live at 792 Alpine Street. You guys have seen me several times before, and I'm here for the same reason again. The road that we live on is an orphaned road, and we have applied multiple times for the orphan roads grant. You've all three been out and seen the road, and it has gotten exponentially worse. Tova Pirlo, she's a nurse, she lives a couple of doors down from me. She can't be here, she's got children that were nearly hit by a car because they couldn't stop because the road couldn't be plowed this past winter. Stu Godwin, owns two properties on that street, also unable to be here, but certainly is concerned because of the fact that he's expressed that even, not even snow, if it's just even a little bit wet, the road becomes impassable. I have a four-wheel drive truck, and I nearly got hung up on a dry road today because it's in that bad a shape. And I'm not the only one. We've got a number of children that live on the street. First-line healthcare workers that have been stranded this past winter and had to find their way to get to the hospitals by walking. This is an ongoing problem, it's not getting any better. I know when we talked last, we talked about splitting the project between the end of this fiscal year and the beginning of the next fiscal year. I've gotten updated quotes from two organizations to do the work. One is a little, it's about 141,000, the other one's 150,000. I've still got a commitment from almost all the neighbors. One of the properties is sold, and I've yet to been able to connect with the individual that purchased it. I've got to take somebody with me because they don't speak English. So I'm still trying to communicate with them, and one other person has moved out, so we're still trying to connect with the new residents. It's an issue that's, it's not going to get better. And you guys know how, you guys know how bad it was when you saw it, and it is significantly worse. And nothing is going to resolve this without basically ripping this road out and replacing it. There is no patching, there is no fixing it. That's the state that it is in, and I would challenge anybody to find a road in the Morgantown area that's this bad. I've gone looking and have not been able to find something that is as deteriorated as this. I had a friend visiting me from Central America a month ago, and they were like, they go, "I thought your government took care of this stuff." And I was like, "Well, it's not always that simple." And I understand that it's not something where you guys can just say, "Hey, let's do this." But I know we've got this program, and, you know, I'm getting the neighbors to commit, and you know there's a need. I mean, it's a significant one, and it doesn't just impact the folks that live right on that street, it impacts the surrounding parts of the neighborhood as well. And I mean, I'd ask to suspend, if you go up to suspending the rules so we can talk about it for a second.
Did you want to? We're still under suspended rules.
Yeah.
We're still under, yeah, I've visited the site as well. And you'd mentioned you had a couple new quotes, I hadn't heard those numbers yet, but, I mean, the road's deplorable, there's no other way around it. We have been discussing it now for a year and a half or so, so I guess we'll take it under consideration again at our staff reports and talk about it in more detail, but that's about all we can do.
Could you send us those revised quotes?
And also, how much have you collected so we know what?
I haven't collected anything.
Well, how much have you been promised?
Basically about $12,000. $1,000 per household is what I was able to get committed. And like I said, one of them has moved, so I've still got to get a new commitment from them. And then the gentleman that owns the apartments on Alpine, Charles Franz, I don't know of a dollar amount from him yet, but he has agreed to commit funds as well. And the stretch of the road that borders his apartments and two of the residents, from everything we can find, it's State Road, not an orphaned road. The bottom section of Alpine is orphaned, but that top portion is state, and it's untouched. The connector up to where it connects to Headley.
Yeah.
You come out Alpine, and then Alpine goes down, and then that stretch right there is part of the State Road, because the upper part of Alpine is a State Road too. It's the lower portion, and the numbers on that quote includes doing that upper portion. It would be less if we were just doing the lower section.
Okay, we need to talk to State Road on that upper section and DOAs and see if they can help, but.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot. You know, you guys have told me before, it's on us to get with you and to come up with a decision and try to help you find a solution. I'm still waiting. And the cost is only going to continue to rise as the road continues to get worse, as cost of materials has gone up. It's gone up every time I've gotten a quote. And eventually, people aren't going to take me seriously, and they're not going to bother to give me quotes. I had to really chase them down this time to get them to send me updated quotes again. I mean, they know what the goal is and what we're trying to do, but at some point, you know, they're going to stop taking me seriously, because, but, I mean, but this is a serious thing.
And from my understanding, Derek, in the past, you've mentioned, once the road's improved, the HOA in that area has agreed to take this road in as part of their co-op neighborhood?
Yeah, the owners can all pay dues, like, president of the HOA is not even who it is, he's a different one now, but he said, "It's pointless for you to pay dues, we can't do anything with this because of the state that it's in." I mean, on more than one occasion, I've been paying money out of pocket to just patch just so I could get into my driveway, and that's even deteriorated. It didn't do anything to fix the road, it just filled gravel and a little bit of asphalt in the trench that was right in front of my driveway, because I couldn't get in the driveway. My car, my vehicle would bottom out trying to get in and out of my own, and out of my own home.
In the event that we are able to come to some type of agreement, can you check with the HOA to see if they would be willing to administer funds in writing, because we can't
Yeah, I talked to the president about that, and I told them, I said, "If we can get this done, I need to do it through the HOA." And he said, "The time comes, you let us know, we'll figure out whatever we got to do to do it." So, but if you need something in writing from them, then I can get that.
Sounds good.
Okay, Derek, thank you, I appreciate it, and I do acknowledge that we do owe you a response. We've got a lot of things on our agenda, but, you know, this is, we owe you, we owe some sort of input back to you, so we will do that.
Thanks, guys.
Is there anybody else? Okay, seeing none. And close the public comment portion of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is proclamation for National Police Week.
Do you want me to read it?
Would you like me to read it for you?
Sure.
I'll take care of it.
That'd be great.
Proclamation, whereas President John F. Kennedy signed into law the bill proclaiming May 15th of each year to be known as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that falls to be known as National Police Memorial Week, which is a time for mourning for police officers killed in the line of duty in recognition of those others who were injured protecting our citizens from harm. And whereas our law enforcement officers are the guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual rights to be free, warriors in the battle against crime, and are dedicated to the preservation of life and property. And whereas every day we ask a great deal of men and women of our nation's law enforcement agencies, from ensuring public safety, to serving as frontline workers, to responding to incidents involving domestic violence, substance use disorders, mental health challenges, and homelessness, often with limited resources. And whereas there have been 228 officers killed in the line of duty in the state of West Virginia, and whereas throughout the nation, more than 800,000 sworn law enforcement officers will participate in this official period of mourning. And whereas to members of law enforcement and your families, we know that not a single day nor a single week is enough to recognize your service and sacrifice. On behalf of the Montague County Commission and citizens, you have our unwavering support and eternal gratitude. Now therefore, we, the members of the Montague County Commission, do hereby celebrate May 10th through 16th, 2024, as National Police Memorial Week in Montague County, and proclaim May 15th, 2024, as Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Day, and call upon all citizens to make every effort to express appreciation to these men and women who are willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard us and our loved ones against all who would violate the law. And be it further resolved that we invite all citizens to reflect and remember Morgantown Police Officer Frank M. Fadizo, apologize if I pronounced that wrong, and Montague County Sheriff Sergeant Michael Todd May, who lost their lives in service to our community. These men will forever be remembered for their ultimate sacrifice, adopted this 8th day of May, 2024.
Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Thank you, and just for the public's knowledge, there will be a re-throwing ceremony next week at 10:45 after our meeting on the Courthouse Square. All the members of all the local law enforcement will be participating along with the county commissioners, so.
And also to acknowledge the officers here, and retired Jimmy Smith, and our officers that protect us every day in the room, we appreciate it. And Alex, also a former law enforcement adjacent officer as well, so we thank you for your service, and move from there.
Okay, you have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proclamation passes. Grants, there are none? Okay, correspondence.
Received the third quarter Parks and Recreation Levy Report from Bow Park. Letter responding to Louis A. Scottrell, Sr., regarding the commission's denial of his request for a hearing in the Arthur P. Scottrell Estate. There's a notice from Twin Knobs Limited Partnership from Wheeling, West Virginia, about the proposed low-income housing tax credit program property, this 81 Twin Knobs Drive. There are 68 units. I think this is part of the requirement for that program, that they have to notify local government. The sheriff forwarded a very nice letter that was written by Christine Wade, city clerk for the city of Morgantown, thanking the sheriff's department and the court security officers for everything that they did while the council was having their meetings here. Last piece I have is a press release from the West Virginia Black Bears regarding the extension of the draft league through the 2030 season.
And that's all good news? I do have one piece of correspondence, we did receive an email from representatives of the United Mind Workers of America, which we are forwarded to our legal counsel and taking under advisement, so. Commissioner Blum, did you have any correspondence?
No, no, sir.
All right. All right, move on to the next item on the agenda is unfinished business, there is none. New business. Consideration to approve the request by Montague County abandoned and dilapidated property enforcement agency to move the property owned by Julian Renee Thomas, Sr., and Elizabeth Thomas, described as District 16, Map 1, Parcel 49, to the complaint stage in accordance with county ordinance 200401. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, you want to come and give us a description of what we're talking about?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning, Alex.
This is regarding a property in Tunnel Street. Back last April, there was a fire that occurred there, and since that time, we have issued notice of violation. I've spoken with the property owner several times to try and gain voluntary compliance. Throughout that, now, it's been over a year, we initiated that investigation on May 23rd, 2023, and I was just up there before I came here, it looks exactly the same as it did that day. So this just moves into that next phase in this process. Official order being issued by you all to the owners. And then from there, we'll look at our next steps to compliance isn't met.
And just for clarification, this is an action that came out of your committee meeting?
Yes, correct.
The committee, you have seen, recommended that it move forward to this stage?
Yes, there is unanimous decision among the court that was there to move this on to the next phase, regarding free issue.
Okay, we have any discussion? Okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Alex.
Thanks, Alex.
Consider for approval, resolution to become a participating employer of the West Virginia Emergency Medical Services Retirement System pursuant to West Virginia Code 165B31 for employees hired on or after June 1, 2024.
Move for approval. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I sat through a lengthy meeting with the retirement board, and it was coordinated by the Commissioners Association of West Virginia about a month ago, and they sent us the packet. The correspondence is just a simple resolution. It doesn't actually have to be signed, but you all have to pass it, and then the clerk will go to the clerk's office for certification. We also have to send to them a certified copy of the minutes where you all adopted the resolution. Once that happens, any new hires after June 1st of 2024 would go into the emergency services retirement system, emergency medical services retirement system that's already been established. So there's benefits for that, there's an earlier retirement date, there's a different calculation whenever they do reach retirement and choose to do that. There's a different calculation on their annuity, so there are benefits to that.
Jimmy, would you like to, do you need to say anything? We've certainly consulted with our 911 director, Jimmy Smith, and I believe that there is there's a lot of approval on your side. I'm trying to think the word I was looking for, to go ahead and move forward with this.
There is, and the other thing that this will allow is there will be an election later this year. I think it starts July 1 and ends at the end of August. And if 75% of the 911 dispatchers across the state where their county commissions have approved this, vote yay for this, then those current employees that are there now will be able to have the option to opt in to the new emergency medical retirement and out of the peers' retirement. With a, the caveat is a three-year window that they cannot retire for three years if they move from the peers into the emergency medical one.
Okay, great, any other questions?
So this is, so what he's saying, this is the first step?
Yeah.
And then we'll keep up with that process, so.
So we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consideration to approve requisition number nine for the University Town Center Series 2023 A Property Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
The requisition is for $1,660, and this is the monthly invoice for Municap for their services to the district.
Move to approve the requisition as presented?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Consideration to approve requisition number 87 for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for $3,328.75. Again, those funds will be paid to Municap for Again, those funds will be paid to Municap for this is their services to the Excise Tax District.
Move to approve the requisitions 87 as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consider for approval of funding up to $30,000 for support of the NCA Regional Baseball Tournament at the Monongahia County Ballpark Complex. I know I got that name wrong, so gotta get used to the new name, but that's what's on the agenda.
And so they've estimated $15,000 for cleanup and $15,000 for security. Um, I guess it might be contingent on if they win tonight.
Not just tonight, tonight and the next two series. They would have to finish in the top 16 in order to post a regional. So hopefully this is money that we'll spend.
Yeah.
But so I would, I would move with hope that we approve the $30,000 support for the regional.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
This is, this is coming out of the Community Events Fund.
Yes, right.
Set aside for, um, it's funded by the lease payments from WVU.
Correct. And this is the same thing we did last year.
Right.
Uh, and it's contingent on obviously the regional coming here, uh, but it's to, uh, again, utilizing those funds to promote events at the ballpark, and, um, that's what the fund is there for. So I, I guess it's, we're hoping that we need to spend that 30,000, but we'll see how the rest of the season goes. So we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Consideration to release the opioid, opioid settlement fund grant application, which will be due by, the application which will be due by June 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, um, I first want to thank Colleen Kuhn, who spent hours watching me pace and listen to my suggestions, and then the county commissioners, who then gave their input. So we came up with what I call is an exceptional application. The application will go online by noon, okay? And it must be submitted by Friday, June 7th at noon. And we have a number, we cut it down to three pages, which I was really pleased with, but there's a lot of specific detail that we requested. Also then, something that I'm very pleased with, there's a budget detail opioid funding application that explains and differs between administrative costs and programmatic costs. And I believe we have, as of right now, and I want to clear, we have over a million dollars. That does not mean we're going to spend it all this year, but we are going to look at the applications. Um, we have several weeks, and we are hoping to start the possibility of distributing the funds come July 1st. Now, I also want to clear that we're not going to give them lump sum. We've learned our lessons, and there will be invoices and on a monthly basis. But, um, very excited that this, that we were able to do this. Um, I also want to thank Canola County, who gave us a general outline, and we took that outline. And this is separate now from the billion dollars that we're going to discuss tomorrow at the Region Four meeting that I'll explain. So this is just Monongahia County's funds. I don't know if anybody wants to ask their questions or, Ms. Kuhn, is Ms. Kuhn, is there anything that you would like to add to it? Now, she's very quiet on this.
I'd just like to echo, uh, Commissioner Bloom's sentiments, thanking, uh, Colleen for all her work on this, and also Commissioner Bloom has worked, um, many hours getting this application together. We will be considering every application that comes through, and, um, we encourage anyone that, uh, is in this, uh, area of expertise and in helping the very cause of what made these funds come to fruition, helping treat the, uh, treat the symptoms that are there. So, thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you, Colleen. This took a lot of work and patience, uh, to work, to work with Commissioner Bloom. But Tom, I do appreciate you taking the lead and, uh, in seeing this process through. Um, the, our grant process works fair, uh, very smoothly. It has for the past two years, uh, and we've basically taken the, we, Colleen, basically taking our existing system and repurposed it for this special grant, uh, funding process. Uh, the total amount in the account right now is a million, 19,092.52, but who's counting?
Right.
Um, but that will, as Tom said, that will, we haven't really just discerned how much of that we, it's all going to be dependent on when grants come in.
Right.
And we'll make those decisions. We haven't set up any guidelines as far as whether we use any, all of that, or, and we'll, we'll figure that out when we get actual grants. But during our regular grant process, we pushed a lot of potential grants that could fit into this category to this system. So those, those entities that may not have been 100% successful, uh, in our previous process, in our normal yearly process, uh, will have opportunity for these specific, uh, funds that are meant for, uh, there's a criteria as far as the different areas or, uh, mitigation strategies or the focused areas that these funds are going to be used for in these grants, and that's what we, we wanted to do is put that out there and let people drill down on these specific areas that need to be addressed. So hopefully it's a, uh, just as a smooth process as our regular grant process is. So, uh, thanks, everyone. Thanks, uh, United Two, for all your, all your help in pulling this together. So, um, we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. No other agenda items?
Yeah.
Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors. Anybody want to speak? Okay. Seeing none, reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Uh, just to thank Councilwoman Trumbull for coming to the meeting today. We, uh, we certainly hear the call to help, um, and we are, uh, we are looking into it. And I serve on a couple of boards with Danielle, and, uh, both of those boards are, have discussed it as well. So we are, um, we're gonna, hopefully we'll be part of the solution moving forward and and seeing what we can do to secure this housing issue and the warming shelter going forward as well. So thanks for coming, and we'll, uh, we'll be working on it. That's all I've got. Tom?
I'll make up for it. I have a number here. First of all, I, I do want to go back to the press release announcing the commitment to, uh, the Black Bears in the league till 2030. Last year, people may not know, but that was up in the air. We did not know if we were going to have a league or not. So that's another six years commitment, and, um, we've won two of the last three years. So that also says a commitment from our community that has been showing up, and I'm real excited about that. Uh, second issue, Friday night, I was able to attend on behalf of the county commissioners' Youth Services Center, was just an appreciation dinner, very thankful for all the support that the county commission has given. Sunday, I also represented the commission. There was a celebration for Charlene Marshall and Jean Friend, and it was exceptional, and you forget when, when Charlene walked up and is so, you know, sharp that she's over 90 years old, and you would not believe it. I mean, it's just amazing what she has done for city, the council, and also this community and House of Delegates. So I really want to thank, a shout out to Charlene and to Jean. Um, okay, next one. Tomorrow, as I just mentioned, the Region Four local governments will be meeting again to elect a, uh, board member for the First Foundation. Our board member has become the executive director. So actually, this is actually a great thing because technically we would have two voices in our community, um, to represent what is going to be up to a billion dollars worth of grants. So we are meeting in the county chambers here tomorrow at 9:30 to make that nomination. Then afterwards, we are going to introduce the 16 members on our project review committee. So we have a double issue, and we also are going to tape it and then put it on later. So we are paying for it to be taped, so the public can see. Finally, Sean and I did attend the grand opening, the ribbon cutting again of the City Council Building, and I want to say, it, it's amazing. I mean, I was there back in 1987, and it's amazing what Danielle, your, your funds have gone to. The historic part of it was kept. Did not know that there were sky, you know, like, at all, did not know that it was covered up. Um, and the doors in the front are the old fire engine doors for the fires. So I mean, they've done an amazing job, and I think you should be really proud of. With what you talked about, I, I did talk, and I want everyone to know, and publicly, there's probably no one on the city council who's worked harder on the homeless issue, uh, the drug issue, opioid issue that we're trying to deal with. And I've worked with her for years in trying to resolve these issues, and she is correct. This isn't just a city of Morgantown issue. This is a huge problem. Um, I do agree, though, I do like her idea. She came to me about the RFP for warming shelter. I think that's something we can look at. Um, I will also throw out, though, one of the concerns about, we have a RFP warming shelter, I do not understand why not one person used the warming shelter last year. And I don't understand that if we have 80 or so people that are in the community and say that they need housing, they never came during those cold spells, and I'm not sure why. But the RFP with a warming shelter, I mean, again, where it's going to be and how it's going to be, I, I think it's something we, we need to look at. The final thing she said about the homeless issue, as Danielle knows, she and I like to say that we are not social agencies. The city and the county, and I'll talk with the county, has been trying and working to find agencies, and we will help subsidize to work with them. The problem is that I want to thank all the, right now, there's 24 different organizations that the county commission funds that's in this county to help with this crisis, with the opioid crisis. One of the biggest concerns is we can offer it, but if people aren't willing to use the, the facilities and the programs, we have a problem. So as much as I agree with Danielle, we can come together, I'm not sure what we're going to do. And I mean, we, and I, you know, I have no problem coming and discussing it, but at the same time, there needs to be the community, and whether it's the churches, whether it's another nonprofit, whether it's the West Virginia Coalition and homelessness, somebody from the state or so on is going to have to take charge of that part of it. And I think the cities and the counties are part of the solution by funding it, but we are not the answer. And to talk about Bartlett House, all I will say is this, I passed on to Nick DiMedici on behalf of the county commissioners, that until we even look at a state auditor going in and seeing what happened in funding and the problems, I have concerns throwing any money until we know exactly what we're talking about. And hopefully, the state auditor, through the request of the Bartlett House Board, will come in and evaluate and see what's going on. And with that, I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Since our last meeting, uh, last Friday, we had staff reports, and then the administrator and I met with, uh, USI reps to continue negotiating our health insurance policy for the new plan year. Um, this week, yesterday was a busy day, had, uh, Development Authority Executive Board meeting in the morning, had a broadband tag up, uh, HR call with, uh, the administrator. Uh, and as Commissioner Bloom indicated, went to City Hall ribbon cutting, and then after that, I was a guest of JB McCuskey and his wife at the West Virginia For Life Dinner down at the waterfront. Today's a regular day. Um, tomorrow, we have MAP Executive Committee meeting, red team, and Development Authority Board meeting. Friday, uh, early morning, I have a Mylan Park Foundation Executive Board meeting. Uh, we have staff reports, and then I have a broadband tag up. Saturday, we're finally getting back to our monthly breakfast, uh, that I have with, uh, Joe Statler and Ron Lidle. Uh, we've, just because of the legislative session and a number of other commitments, we've got off schedule for about five or six months, but, uh, hopefully we're going to get back on schedule, so I'm looking forward to meet with those guys on Saturday. Um, Tuesday, I have lunch with the constituent, and of course, it's Election Day. And I want to remind people that early voting is still going on. Please get out and exercise your right to vote. Um, I think you can't complain unless you're willing to do something. I say that all the time, but people will anyhow, but, uh, I, I should at least make you feel better to complain and knowing that you voted, so. Um, thank you, Danielle. Did you see back here behind?
Yeah, she's behind the post.
Thank you very much, Danielle. I appreciate you coming to talk to us, and, uh, uh, we're certainly, um, on board as far as dealing with issues and working together, and we'll, we stand ready to, to, uh, have those conversations, uh, whenever, whenever you're ready for that.
Yeah.
Um, that's all I have. Having said that, now I entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I did have two things I wanted to, uh, mention. I forgot in correspondence, but I did have a letter from, um, Anthony DeFalice. Uh, I was copied on this. It's to the sheriff, but I just wanted to make sure it was read as a matter of record. It's officially indicating that Lee Smith is retiring, and they need the, uh, the Dr. Huggins, the incoming health officer, to be the signer on the accounts. So that letter was sent to the sheriff's office. I'm sure they're taking care of it, but I did want to mention it as a matter of the record. And also, we did get a flyer from the, uh, West Virginia Ethics Commission for some of our other, uh, entities. Uh, I believe they provide it. That training's open to even non-pro, is it open to anybody or just government entities?
The Open Meetings Act, yeah.
Okay, so anybody has to follow the Open Meetings Act, but they're providing a training tomorrow. In order to be part of that, you just need to email, uh, Kimberly Weber at the, uh, West Virginia Ethics, what is it, the Ethics Commission?
Yeah.
Uh, to get a link to the meeting. It's 12 o'clock tomorrow, but if anybody wants to participate, I'll leave this information with, uh, our administrator. So having said that, now I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, adjourned.